Next item.
Next, special reports, PLC process, Ms. Fatma Faraj, Mr. Adam Martin, and Ms. Lamis Rur.
Good evening, everyone. You probably have been hearing the term PLC more than any other acronym or term for the last few weeks. So we're going to help define PLC as we understand it and also answer any questions that you may have or the community may have. I will start by defining the term PLC, which stands for professional learning communities. The professional learning communities model is actually a group of educators who meet regularly to share best practices, analyze student data, plan instruction based on the analysis of the data, and collaborate to improve their practices and the student achievement. We've been implementing PLC in the district for the last, I would say, a decade or 15 years, even more than that. However, critical components of the model were not necessarily implemented with integrity at the district due to time and/or other constraints. So when we started looking at systemizing practices or creating a system of practices across the district, especially when we fit this model under school improvement plan, and we were asking principals and teachers to implement and demonstrate what we call highly functioning PLC or highly functioning professional learning communities, we heard both from teachers and administrators that if we want to have these highly functioning groups functioning like a highly functioning PLC, we need time to do this work. In reality, the key to implementing highly functioning professional learning communities with integrity is to ensure continuous and job embedded learning is in place for all teacher teams. When we say teacher teams, we mean grade level teams in elementary or content teams in secondary, also teams of professional staff that include specials like art, music, PE, and every team that works together. This work comes from Solution Tree. Solution Tree is, it's a professional development entity that is very known here in the U.S. and international. This work was mainly determined by Rick D. For. Rick D. For worked for 40 years in school. He was an educational researcher who did action research on best practices. And if you see the highlighted words in this definition, this is his book, Learning by Doing, and this is where we learned what professional learning communities is. It is really an ongoing process where the key components is working together collaboratively, and it must be job embedded professional learning. And when we say continuous, it means it needs to occur regularly on a weekly basis. And as we work with PLC and looking at the minutes, for a highly functioning professional learning community, we need at least 120 minutes on a weekly basis to implement the key components. Rick D. For, or Richard D. For that I mentioned in the previous slide breaks PLC into three big ideas. The first one is focus on learning or purpose, which is when teachers collaborate on what is best practices and how can we ensure that there is equity in the curriculum that we implement and with the standards that we teach. And it goes through a cycle where teacher teams or content teams would look at, they collaborate, look at results, and based on those results, they would implement interventions and/or enrichments to support students who did not meet the essentials that they teach. Adam and Lamis will go into further details on all of these components and will get to answer your questions.
Thanks, Fatma. So six essential elements of a real PLC. Educators working collaboratively rather than in isolation. I think that's self-explanatory. Professional learning communities, community is collaboration. Schools develop collaborative structures. So how do schools position teams, teacher teams, and building-wide teams to work together and build in time for them to be able to identify what it is that kids need to know, determine if kids know it, and then take action on it? I think in the slide before, in the definition of professional learning communities, it's really action research. Where are we doing well? Where aren't we doing well? How do we support students better? And then how do we grow as professionals? Develop a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Last year and over the course of the last, I would say, 10 years, our professional learning communities in buildings have been identifying essential standards. You've seen a lot of curriculum adoptions and resources. Last year, we used Title II funds and had Solution Tree consultants come in and help with district-wide developing essential standards and aligning resources to best support student learning. Common formative assessment, that's the work that's going to be done this year through Title II funds in addition to work that has already been done in building. So common formative assessments are ways that you determine if kids learned what it is that you're teaching and looking at that data together collaboratively and then determining how to best use your resources to support students and move them forward. The result of it would be mastery learning and hopefully mastery teaching. System of interventions and extensions. So as I said, what happens when students don't understand what's going on? How do we support them? How do we move them forward? And for the students that already know it, how do we help them and continue to challenge them? And then finally, evidence of student learning to inform and improve their individual and collective practice of its members. So important notes here, PLC is not a meeting, it's our culture. Truly, it is who we are. It's, and some may think of it, hey, it's just a meeting. It's a meeting, but it's also a process. It's also a belief, right? How do we identify what it is that we want kids to learn? And how can we reflect on that data to best move ourselves forward? The collaborative team is the platform that PLC chooses to do its work. I think the word collaborative is on every slide here because truly that's what it's about. How do we learn from each other? How do we maximize each other's strengths? And then how can we be reflective on our own practices as educators to improve? And last one, collaboration happens at every level. In small teacher teams, you might have a second grade team that's two people. You might have a biology team that's five people. You may have teacher, or sorry, building-wide teams that are 12 or 15 people deep. The goal is collaboration happens at every level. Lamis?
The fundamental structure of PLCs is driven by these four critical questions. What do we want students to know and be able to do? How do we know if students have learned it? How do we respond when students don't learn it? And how do we respond when students have learned it? So going back to number one, what do we want students to know and be able to do? I'll refer to what Adam said. We've chosen essential standards. Buildings have chosen them, and now we have district chosen essential standards. How do we know if students have learned them? That's where we decide what mastery looks like across all classrooms and providing timely formative assessments. And how do we respond when they don't know? That's where we talk about in PLCs. What does tier one need to look like? What interventions or supports can we put in place to support our kids, to get them towards mastery? And then how do we respond when students have learned it? What enrichment opportunities can we provide for these students so that the rigor keeps increasing? The next slide connects PLC to our school improvement process. It's aligned in many ways. The process is aligned under school improvement, under school and district, thank you, columns. And it's aligned, it's identified a group of leaders from each building for sustainability. So you'll find in every building, grade level reps across core areas who are part of this process, leading PLCs. And then many times, leaders switch so everybody has an opportunity to lead in the process. We call them the guiding coalition at the building level. And sustainers, these sustainers and administrators meet to establish a common vision for this work. And the common vision is student achievement. It's that simple. All means all, no student left behind when it comes to achieving and mastering the guaranteed and viable curriculum that we are promising every student will master. And finally, all levels, core subjects in secondary, and then ELA and math in elementary have been established. The essential standards have been established. For elementary, this coming year, we are establishing science and social studies.
So as a result of the need to collaborate systemically, continuously, and in themes, this is a model that we were not the first to implement. We have taken this after best practices nationwide. Yes, it's not implemented in every district, but to ensure that we have systemic processes in place and guarantee what we talked about to every student and every teacher, we came up with early dismissal. And this has been in discussion for the pre-COVID. And then we paused it due to COVID. And then we came back and talked about it, how we can implement it, best implement it to make sure that we state requirements in terms of days and hours of instruction and emphasizing structure so that every building is implementing the process the way it should be implemented, or we can call it implementing with integrity. Again, to support implementation, we have 90 minutes every Tuesday year round. We're starting on October 10 due to childcare. And also, the district will be monitoring this for integrity and implementation, as we mentioned, the three instructional executive director and Mr. Asaili, who's overseeing special pops as well. Teacher preparation programs are fast-paced these days. We know that there are some programs that are one year long, and then teachers graduate and they start working. They truly need this collaboration with the experienced teachers in order to gain skills and also talk about student achievement and best practices. Under my KIP, Lamis mentioned that this is our district improvement plan, school improvement plans in every building, and also the strategic plan. If you look in these three big rocks for the district, you're going to find the same process being spelled out in different ways, but with the same purpose. Some of the considerations that we had to think about were reducing the number of half days. We eliminated the professional development half-days that we had in the district in previous years. We eliminated late starts, and we, the extended day option that we're going to implement to assist families who are not able to pick up their children on time. And also, we made sure that we were in compliance in terms of days and hours that were required by MDE while maximizing that total year-long calendar. Our vision, and we do see, we do see our district maximizing the skill set of teachers, which will result in maximizing capacity among teachers and improving student achievement as a result of this model. We are open for questions.
I will start. Going back to the four critical PLC questions. In the past, we will have programs that are pilots at maybe just a few buildings. How does that feed in to the idea that in some ways, we're trying to be the same across all the subjects, the commonality? So how do we still roll pilots in or other things just to try it and see if it works better than what we're doing?
You mean curriculum, material pilots?
Whether it's, is there a better way to build the mousetrap?
So the curriculum is the standards. That's what drives our instruction. When we adopt materials or programs, we pilot them to see which one best aligns with our standards and the needs and how we want to teach. So it's not a conflict, I don't believe. The standards give us the what, and then these pilot programs give us choices with the how.
So we can still get to the same goal, but the path might be a little bit different?
Yeah, and even in PLCs now, no part of it is to build, or is to build consistency with how teachers teach. They have the autonomy to do that. And that's what's celebrated with PLCs, is that teachers can learn from one another what's working and what's not. So the essence of PLC is really celebrating how everybody teaches, bringing back the data. And then you have an environment where teachers can ask each other, well, your data showed a bigger improvement than mine. What did you do that was different than what I did? And this is where that community philosophy comes in.
Okay. Trustee Pelishkov?
As we move forward, is there like a master plan, a master schedule if we're trying to have consistency across the district rather than this building's doing this at this time, and this building's doing something different at a different time? Is there like a game plan out there that, I'm assuming, building administrators are then putting together their early Tuesday release days similar across the district?
Yes, we do have a plan that we developed in conjunction with DFT administrators and central office support staff. And the plan is very explicit, spells out exactly what happens during PLC, the dos and don'ts. And the focus on the first question, Lamis just answered that because really, the first question is the essentials, and that's what we should be focusing on regardless of what we use. So the plan is divided into three components. The first one is looking at student data. Second one is planning based on the results that we see and talk about practices and improve them. And the third one is called PST, problem-solving teams, where we talk about students who are still not making progress even after the tier-two intervention. And then calling in specialists, and the specialists may be speech and language pathologists or a resource teacher from the special ed department or a Title I resource teacher, an English language development specialist. So any person from these specialists who can support that specific student who is not making progress will attend the PST team. These are called problem-solving teams for students who are not making progress despite going through tier one, which is the essential standards, and then receiving additional interventions through tier two, then they go to tier three, which is that problem-solving team.
So it's going to take a little bit of time to gather data as you move forward with this. So how often will the data be reviewed and shared? And will it be shared across a district? Is one building getting better results than another building as opposed to one classroom versus another classroom? How is that going? How are we going to use the data?
These are great questions. I'm going to give Adam a turn to answer this one.
I got to make you work for it. You're making us.
Good job, Fatma. So I think there's a misnomer a little bit, right? A lot of what happens in the class that's actionable is smaller chunk assessments, right? From a district perspective, we have more end-of-unit, end-of-term assessments that we would have data on. The richest data is the formative assessment and the feedback that's happening on a weekly or bi-weekly basis with teachers and teacher teams because they're able to enact a remedy and at the same time reflect on, okay, how do we present this information going forward? So I would say yes and no. There will be district data this year with Title II. We're going to be developing benchmark assessments that have or are a direct result of the essential standard work that happened this past year. So we will have that data. And then that data will be, get unpacked into smaller assessments that teachers will use over the course of a unit or two that would be more for their planning and their intervention for students within the classroom. But from a district perspective, that's not something that, I would say, teachers need the autonomy to be able to see that, see that data and act on that data. From a district perspective, looking at those benchmark assessments and kind of some end of the year or end of semester really helps us in terms of are our essentials meeting it? And might there be an opportunity for us as a district to support teachers and to support learning in a different way? So hopefully, I answered that accurately.
I think we'll kind of have to wait and see as we move forward with this new plan.
Another question is, you mentioned that schools develop collaborative structures, but we also talked about it sometimes it's at a district level. So how do we decide when are we going outside the building for what's working out there versus inside? Are we saying like, two weeks are inside, and then we're going to collaborate with people outside? Do we have like a certain pattern that we're trying to follow? Or is it still to be decided since this is a new structure that we're implementing?
So we envision the collaborative teams to, for the most part, to be inside the building. If a specialty group such as art, music, PE, because there is one person in each building, approximately, they can meet across the district in teams, and they can use Zoom for their meetings. And we're trying as much as possible to facilitate and be flexible in order to be more productive. For example, during COVID, we leveraged the ability to be via Zoom, and the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers, district-wide, because they were able to. They were able to sit through Zoom and work on the essentials during that year. But this is not always possible. It is best to meet as a building and move from when you are. But when there's a need to meet across the district with a team that's a smaller team, we can also do that. But for the most part, it's in the building. We see it in the building. Unless there's a singleton's grade level in the building, then we can team them up with a building that has fewer staff members to make sure that those people have colleagues to collaborate with.
Adal? Sorry, trustee Mosov?
Actually, I have that question about collaborating between different buildings, different grade levels at different buildings that could help out. But my two questions, one is, has this been done? Has this been done in any buildings? I know I've heard PLCs for a long time, so can you shed light on that? And also, the number of minutes, which is 90 minutes, is that also accounted for as far as instruction time that is required by the state? Or that's not included in the calculation?
Sure. I would say we have early adopters and innovators in all of our building that are living and breathing this all day long. We have, I think, in all of our feeders, grade levels or content teams at the secondary level that are constantly in collaboration with each other, are looking at data, are designing interventions and enrichment during the week on their own because, hey, this is really fruitful, and we're seeing a lot of growth with our students. I would say it's not super widespread, and some of that has to do with the constraint that is time. When do teachers build that in? So not, at all of our secondary buildings, we're not able to get common preps because it's really impossible to do with staffing, and it would be disingenuine of us, and Tom would probably kill us if we wanted to resource it out that way because we would have more staff than we necessarily need for students. At the elementary level, at your bigger buildings, it's a little bit easier to accomplish, but at your smaller buildings, it's really difficult, which is why the idea for early release was that systemic embedded time that is regular, once a month or a half-day, once every two months, is really difficult to be able to have that data loop I was talking about earlier, to be able to take action on it. So to answer your question, yes. And there are buildings across the nation. So Stevenson High School in Lincolnshire, where Rick D. For was before. We, many of us have visited there, and some of the stuff they're doing is truly transformational for kids, mastery teaching and mastery learning, which I think is what we're all here for. In terms of the instructional hours and those other pieces, so the state does allow us to use some of our PD time to forgive instructional hours and instructional days. So I know one big question that has been asked since the early release on Tuesday has been why Tuesday and not another day? Part of the reason it was Tuesday was, and Dr. Kathy Martin is behind me, the negotiating team for the DFT was really, really looking forward to ending the school year on June 7th. So when we started looking at, and I would say it was an exciting and fun process working collaboratively with the DFT in terms of how does early release and the calendar fit together? How do instructional hours fit together? How do instructional days fit together? The reason we landed on Tuesday, we had three Tuesdays throughout the year that were already going to be days off, the November election, the February primary election, and then the eat. So in order to maximize instructional hours and days, that's why we chose Tuesday as opposed to another day of the week. There was some discussion of beginning of the week, end of the week. Absences are, for students and for staff, at the beginning and end of the week are pretty significant. So, you know, we're trying to build a systemic way to provide teachers an opportunity to be able to work collaboratively that we thought was most impactful from a practical standpoint, but then also from hours and days, it made best sense to put it on Tuesdays.
Trustee Barry?
Just since, a follow-up on that, Mr. Martin, Tuesdays compared to, instead of Fridays. Okay, so you're saying first component is student absences. How does that play into the formula?
So it doesn't necessarily play into the formula unless we have less than 75% of students in attendance, and then that day doesn't count. So when we forgave days, we forgave right to, I think we went from 185 to 181. May I some correct me if I'm wrong? Eighty-three, 183. So we were concerned about days counting. So it was kind of that piece.
Wait, if students aren't showing up on Fridays?
If we have, if we have less than the 75% attendance on any given day, that day can't count as an instructional day.
I get that part, but I mean, when was the last time we had less than 75%?
I don't know that we have.
Yeah, I mean, it's, let's keep it real. But then for...
Typically, when we have a shortened day or half a day, we have higher absence rates than the typical. So if we do have every Friday a shortened day or early dismissal day, there are chances that we're going to be falling short on attendance on the side of students. And we also have trends of higher rates of teacher absences on Fridays. We don't want to risk attendance. We wanted to make sure that we select a day that's, based on research, it's the best day and time to do professional development and also to be safe in terms of absences because students are more likely to miss days if it's a shortened days.
But we've had shortened days before, half-days. I can't remember. I'm sure we'd get, we'd get it in board notes if we, at this building or as a district, we fell below the 75%. For the last 10 years, I can't recall that ever being a discussion.
And typically, when we have half-days and we do notice the absences, right away, we go to MyStar and we pull reports, and we calculate district-wide. Sometimes by building, we can fall short of the 75%, but district-wide, it must be 75%. And since it's every Friday, we don't want to risk having this as an issue in our way. Otherwise, we would be repeating days in June if we fall short on attendance. We would have to add school days to the calendar. That's the only reason.
The staff attendance teachers, I know on any given day, we have, you know, over 100 teachers not show up, and we have to lean on our substitutes. I know on Fridays, it go up, it goes up, it'd be a couple percentage more. Is that enough to penalize? This, in my opinion, penalize the parents. So now, we did this going into the school year, and I'm very happy that we delayed this a couple months to give the parents some time to figure things out, but parents who are not involved in this process, and they're the ones that's going to get penalized with this, you know, early release. This is something that might have been, since we've been discussing this for a long time, maybe we should have gave them the heads up. I've had a parent tell me, if I knew this was coming, I probably, because they were on the fence about leaving the district, and they said I probably would leave the district. So I'm not still sold on that maybe it is Friday. I mean, my understanding what you're saying, that... You're, I mean, my understanding what you're saying that if we go to Fridays, that's going to encourage more absences that day?
Feedback from teachers was that, in addition to the risking attendance, teachers are not in favor of meeting at the end of the day on Friday. Based on best practices, Tuesday is what, is the best day to provide professional development.
Okay, so we love our teachers.
So there are different reasons for selecting Tuesday. One of them is attendance.
We love our teachers, but at the same time, we as a board have a boss. It's called the parents, the voters. And, you know, I know it was funny earlier that, you know, everybody's learning about PLC and all the emails, everybody's seeing them, but this is real for parents. You know, I spoke to a teacher today. She's a teacher and a parent in the district. She's, you know, she's like, how do I do this? How does this, how's this possible? So I'm very concerned that we didn't get any, speaking of input, I mean, we didn't get any input from our parents on this. And they're the, the ones ultimately that's scrambling right now. They're like, okay, school year's starting next week. We have to figure something out. But that's not who we are. I mean, we talk about transparency, hold us accountable and all this good stuff. And we wanted feedback from our parents. Let's get parents involved in committees, but they don't have a choice here. So yes, I can say, I can speak for myself. Yeah, we're taking a meeting by the parents right now. This is not fun for them. It's not fun for us and it's not fun for you. I get this. PLC, listen, anything that helps assessment scores, student growth, we have to try. I, I, I talked a lot of teachers that are, you know, friends and they're, they explained it to me. They're very supportive. There are some teachers or, you know, they come with the attitude that we want to be in front of our students. That's what we can most effective. Both arguments are right, but this is something that was negotiated. I get that part. And, you know, we saw the numbers when, when the teachers voted for the contract. But the other question is, I don't know who's going to answer that. Maybe Mike can answer this. How does this affect the special ed students? I mean, I've, I've been hearing from some people that are very, very knowledgeable, they spoke to their advocates and they're saying that this violates their IEPs. Shed some light on that, please.
As of right now, the only part that it probably violates is the number of hours they're in school for the gen ed week. So we are going to have to amend our IEPs to make it reflective of 30 and a half hours versus 32 hours. We have no intention as a district to cut service time because within the PST time, we're very, very cognizant of needing our service providers to be in front of students. So part of that time, we kind of built in for our special ed staff to do some things that they would maybe do typically during the day, including meetings, paperwork, and things along those lines. I will tell you, our preschool programs that run half a day, they're going to be impacted. So what we did there was we kind of took 45 minutes from the morning session and shaved 45 minutes off the afternoon session. Now, I will be, you know, honest that we are fortunate here in Dearborn to where our preschool, our ECSC programs, early childhood special education programs, do run five days. Most early childhood special education programs really run four days. If you look at, you know, throughout Wayne County and throughout the community. So from that specific perspective, we're, we're comfortable. Now, you know, the reality is, of course, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be positives and there's going to be some things that, you know, we're just going to have to work on to try to make up with any situation that we do. So we were, you know, we understood that, but I think we're very, very committed to ensure that, you know, our services don't decline. You know, on the flip side, I've also spoke to some parents who were excited about this and saw it as an opportunity to do some different things that they wanted with their child. But we are aware of that. We're listening to the community and we started problem solving from the very get-go. We started, we kind of went to the table. I think it was last February, March when we first, you know, possibly started hearing about some of these things and really wanted to problem solve to make sure it doesn't impact services.
And when you say you started problem solving from the get-go, this is not something new to you that is going to affect our IEPs? You're saying now we're going to have to adjust some of them?
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously because it's a negotiated thing. So it wasn't anything that we can just go ahead and, and just do. And when I say adjust, we're going to have to amend IEPs because within each IEP, it'll tell you how many hours a week a child is in school for.
Of course.
Right? So it was 32 hours. It's going to be 32 hours up until October 10th. So what we're going to have to do from the first day till October 10th is amend IEPs so it can reflect that they're going to be in school for 30 and a half hours a week.
Okay. And my last question is probably geared towards Dr. Maliko. I know this is negotiated as part of the DFT contract and I get that and it's a sort of kind of long. It's a five-year contract. Is this something we're going to monitor and adjust if we need to?
We can always sit down with the union and see. I mean, I think every year we have to see how things work and if they're amenable, we, we would sit down and say, hey, if we need to tweak some things, we have the ability to reach letters of agreement. We also have to monitor the county and state law. So for example, here's another example. We, with, we can agree to the calendar, but then we have to follow the state and the county common calendar. And if the county changes it, then we have to amend it there. The other thing is we do have a waiver for one more year to start before Labor Day. So that has an impact. We have to apply for that again next year. So again, we can't supersede with what's in the contract to follow the law. At my superintendent meeting, in fact, on this issue, the state was denying waivers for di- different reasons, but my understanding is that's been fixed and that next year will be fine. So we were glad that we had one more year on that waiver until we have to apply. So we would have to revisit. I think anything we do, we should be surveying, collecting data. I can just say too, like with the professional learning community, the overall concept, I believe in it as well. Can tell you my first time I, I went and I've read all the due for books. 2002, they came to Plymouth and then I went to Lincolnshire in 2003 when I was a Salina principal. We implemented it and, and to answer some of the other questions, building-based is more effective to make sure that you have buy-in. But one of the things that I, I, I would promote is that, you know, it's not like administration running this. There should be leadership teams within the buildings, the teachers, the staff, that are working to set the agendas for what occurs. And then there are some what they call loose tights. There's things in the, in the professional learning community that should be done and there's some things that you shouldn't. And those are the things that, you know, the leaders that have gone to training would know. I would say too, that in the summer, we have sent every year multiple people to the institutes. And the summer is a great time to do it because they're not missing out with, with the, and I sign the forms and I have no problem in the summer because sending multiple has been a benefit. When I was in HR too, I brought my team. I think I've been to like four of the institutes over the years. So it really is effective when it's done appropriately. I think there was a question too. We were piloting in a few buildings pre-pandemic where we were paying extra money for a handful of schools, 12 of them, to actually have additional time. So I, I get the part about the parents and I'll, and I'll speak to that trustee Barry too. So the time, we were always having trouble finding time. So we were actually paying more than the pandemic hit. We put it on hold. But it was a handful of schools that were able to do it. We couldn't do it across the district. This, I get it that it creates inconvenience for parents. This is why we've been meeting. I think it's been the main topic of discussion. And in a perfect world, we would have let, loved to have gotten this out earlier, but the reality is we were in negotiation and it, it's really no one's fault. It's just negotiations. It's just what happened and we couldn't get it out because we wanted to, you know, bargain in a fair manner. But I get with the parents, I would say that's why we committed to delaying it. I put out that letter. We need to work on things to accommodate parents and make sure that we're providing support because I understand what you're saying. I've been hearing it as well. I've been hearing people happy and others that are not. I would also say that those of you that remember when we went to the late start, we had maybe some similar conversations that were occurring as people were adjusting. But I totally understand that. We got to be empathetic to the parents and, you know, try to provide support to them with, with the days that we have these early releases. So, you know, I'm with you on that. And I think that's why we've been spending a lot of time and really working hard. We may have some staffing issues because one of the things, we had our administrative retreat last Friday and I did tell the principals, the administrators, as we get to start in October, it's possible that, look, we're just going to get it going. So administration may have to help with the students initially. Like we might not be able to get them right in there right away, but at least we will get it going. So I think the reality is, is that there's going to be, it's not going to be totally smooth when you implement something new, but we'll do our best to accommodate parents and understand that this is going to be a hardship on them. And, you know, I think we're all empathetic and, which is why we think moving to this change, there was some hesitation initially, but then we, we're all in because we ultimately know what the benefit can be. So we're weighing those, but I totally understand what the parents are doing. Sorry, I took a little longer, but.
No, you're fine. Thank you. I guess a year from now, we'll look at the results and see.
We could, yes, yeah. You're, you're absolutely right. We need to look at data, right, Ms. Farage? And, you know, collect it. And then also we can look at, okay, did this work? Do we need to maybe, again, we have to negotiate it, but with the union, but we could look at what day may be more effective or not. Maybe Tuesdays won't be. Maybe it'll be another day, you know, that we might need to look at, so.
Trustee Watts.
So earlier today, and I, a different perspective from one of the parents that I met. So I was at the dentist today and I shared this with somebody earlier, but I was in the waiting room with a mom who had twins who were going in to get their teeth cleaned and they were autistic and they were very nervous. And, um, and mom was trying to tend to their emotional state at that point and I was trying to help with the youngest one. And she had said that she actually appreciates having every Tuesday because her twins need that sort of consistency and that dependability of knowing it's going to be every Tuesday versus a Wednesday here, a Friday there. And it'll be easier for her to be able to set up childcare for her twins. So I thought that was an interesting perspective to be able to have that sort of dependability from that parent to say it's going to be every Tuesday for an early release. And then later on during that visit, their actually special ed teacher came in to help mom during that hour of teeth being cleaned. And she's a teacher at, a special ed teacher at Whitmore Bowles and now she'll be at Nolan. And she had said the same thing, that she really liked the idea of having an every Tuesday. So it was just one of those authentic interactions to be able to see the different perspectives from various parents. Because I know some parents with special ed students had, were concerned, but this mom was actually thankful that, for that, that consistent schedule, so.
Yes, the question, because which is that industry go to?
Only if he gives me a referral fee.
Trustee Pelishkov.
And, and just for clarity, even though trustee Barry said parents weren't involved, I believe we did have a survey at one point. I don't know how many parents were part of that response of the survey or how the survey was put out about whether preference for late start versus early release. Is that correct?
The survey specified Wednesday for early dismissal. There was early dismissal, not late starts. And we had 63% of parents who were in support of those who answered. And the reason we switched to Tuesdays for the reasons that Mr. Martin mentioned, that they were already three full days off and we wanted to gain some instructional time.
Was it clear in the, and I don't know what the survey looked like and I don't know how it went out. Did it just go out to every stu-, a parent or?
Every parent received the survey.
Received the survey.
And it was on school blogs.
It was on, okay.
And the message was translated in Arabic as well.
So, so everybody had the ability to see it. They might not have noticed it or, or responded to it.
Correct. And this is the case with every survey that we send out.
That's how, how it goes out. All right. So I just wanted to clarify that parents were where the question was being asked. Now, I don't know how long ago that survey went out. If we started this a while ago, it was.
It was in March 2022.
2022, so it was fairly recent then.
We looked it up on school blogs. You'll find it. But we do have a plan moving forward to engage the PTA council to kind of public, publicize our surveys on a broader.
Yeah, to make sure that it's highlighted somehow. That was one of my, my questions then is we need to do probably a more robust job of alerting parents of things going out that could eventually affect them down the road in, in such a major way. But, but there was a, there was a percentage that would prefer, I, I'm not talking about the day, but would prefer an early release versus a late start. Correct?
The question was if they were in favor of early dismissal on Wednesdays, every Wednesday.
And it was every Wednesday. So they knew it was a weekly thing and not going to be the once a month late start like what we were experiencing. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we at least made an effort. As, as disconcerting as I know it is for parents right now who were unaware of it, I, I, I'm hoping that we do the best job we can at communicating these types of changes because a, a lot of people are challenged by it. But I will say that I was on the board when late start Wednesday started way back when and it was an upheaval then as well. It was very challenging and, and we had a lot of parents who were, who were quite challenged by that as well. And we had a lot of kids who were coming in for morning breakfast on Wednesdays with, with locked doors kind of thing. So it, it takes time to transition. And I hope that, yes, we will monitor it and see whether this works and whether it's worth the change. But that, you know, as we move forward, I want to make sure that the effort that we put out there has the return we hope and expect to see for, for these kinds of upheavals because it, it is so hard for people to shift their, their days as we're asking them to.
Right. It's important to note too, that when we sent out the surveys, we were monitoring response rate every Friday and sending principals messages telling them like we had 4% response rate or 12% response rate. And they would set up Chromebooks out in the hallways or by the office or during parent teacher conferences, whichever activities they had in the buildings and try to recruit parents to answer the surveys and get higher participation. So that's what we do when we send out surveys. Back in the day, it was a common practice to have 20% response rates, but they no longer go by that because we have lower response rate as we move with time. So it is very difficult to get higher response rates.
Dr. Maliko.
Just quickly on that too, this discussion started years ago too. So like with the late start, and I do remember too where, and then eventually people got, you know, got used to it. But I think there was looking at, was it being used effectively with the time? And I think that's where administration started looking at it, working with all staff. And then we did put a slowdown on it with, it was previous union leadership. But they basically said, let's go cautiously with this until we are into the contract year. So we were actually looking, if some of the board members might recall from board briefs and whatnot, that we were looking at maybe trying it a year ago, but we all, including myself, said, no, let's put a little bit of a brakes on it, take our time with it. But we have been looking at it for quite a while and sending a lot of staff to training so that they will be ready. So, thank you.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah, I have a question about accommodating parents, especially working parents right now. I know in, in your letter, Dr. Maliko, you mentioned there might be some sort of latchkey programs. Can you elaborate more on that?
We're working on that. I think we have a committee. Yeah, do you want to comment?
We're meeting on that tomorrow to determine how we're going to address this and making sure we accommodate for the parents, to put a plan together and make sure we connect with every building principal. There's going to be surveys going out to the parents, those who request latchkey or the optional program at the end of the day when they can pick up their children. And we'll, we'll be communicating with, with the board and with the community on that.
And staffing, we're, we're working hard too because staffing could be an issue, obviously. You know, you need enough staff to, or, so depending on how many are interested in trying to do it at a low cost fee or trying to supplement for, for the start. We talked about it, Jim.
Trustee Ambrosio.
That's, Dr. Maliko answered my question. Is there going to be a charge to this latchkey program?
Yeah, it is going to be fee-based and we will announce that while we are planning to make sure that, like, we cannot accommodate every student if they choose to stay in the building because we don't have the staff to supervise and monitor students. So there has to be fee related to this.
We are looking at though, and I know we spoke, President Thorpe, of trying to supplement that somehow. So I'm talking to Mr. Wall to see, especially in the first year, what we can do. It's just we're worried about a total open would be, our staffing is going to be a challenge. So, so we're trying, we're going to definitely try to offset that to supplement some of the fees to make it very reasonable. And I know we talked about, we did discuss in our meetings, you know, a, a zero fee, but this is kind of where we're ending up and we can have more discussions with the board on that.
One item that was mentioned by a couple of the trustees was how long is it in place? As we evaluate it, when do we, when do we decide if it stays the same or changes it? And while I love deadlines, we also need to make sure that we have enough time for the implementation to, to work and then to evaluate if it's worth it, so to speak. One other question that I had. One other question that I had is, in the last month, the, the board has been going over the evaluation process with the superintendent. And we would occasionally talk about staff and teacher evaluations. With the PLC process, since collaboration is so important, is there anything in the evaluation that, that gets to that point? Not just are, are, are we doing a good job teaching the students, but are we working together well in a group setting? Is, is that there? Is that something that's discussed?
There is a section or a domain titled professional responsibilities and I would think this would land under there. It's not as spelled out, I think, as we would, or we would like, I guess, but it would fall under there very easily.
Okay. Trustee Watts.
I was going to say, something to consider also is that MDHHS may cover if the parents qualify the cost of after-school care. Something to look into.
Anything else? Thank you very much for the presentation.